May of thought, Lyon County Board of County Commissioners meeting for Thursday, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three. Starting today, there is going to be take action will be taken on all items unless otherwise noted. No action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendas. To avoid meeting disruptions, we will place cell phones and beepers in the silent mode or turn them off during the meeting. Board reserves the right, eight items in a dip to quarter.
To accomplish business in the most efficient manner, items may be combined for consideration, items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. Restrictions on comments by the general public, any such restrictions must be reasonable and may restrict the time, place and manner of the comments, but may not restrict comments based upon viewpoint. Board of Commissioners convening as other boards, members of the Board of County Commissioners also serve as the Liquor Board, Central Lion Vector Control District Board, Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement District Board, Walker River Weed Control District Board, Willow Creek General Improvement District Board, the Silver Springs General Improvement District Board, and during this meeting may convene as any of those boards is indicated on this or a separately posted agenda. And this meeting may break between eleven thirty and one thirty for lunch. However, we have a fairly short agenda, I believe today, so we may be getting done before lunch. I'd also like to welcome our new Commissioner, Commissioner Hendricks. She's up here and we'll be swearing her in shortly. Roll call. I have Commissioner Jacobson, Commissioner Keller, Commissioner Hendricks, Commissioner Henderson.
John Doe.
Yeah, just I just got a shot through my shoulder and myself in chambers. invocation will be given by Irene Albretton, First Christian Church. If you'll all rise, please.
We're gonna have to unmute her. You have to mute her.
Oh.
Okay. Good afternoon, good morning. Will you please join me in prayer? Gracious God, thank you for the gift of life and of meaningful work. Thank you for this commission meeting and bless all who participate. Grant each person the ability to live fully into who you have created them to be. And may the work done today be done in a spirit of cooperation and in the best interest of the people of Lyon County. In your holy name we pray, amen.
Commissioner Henderson, will you please leave us in the pledge?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. My nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just every once in a while I get a shot of pain through my shoulder and it just kind of stops me in my tracks. Public participation or action will be taken on any item until it is properly agendas. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, but may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each agenda item, but before the board takes any action. It looks like we have Mr. Wright and we have a
You put the thirty-second timer up there or the three-minute one?
I'll do you three minutes today, sir.
Russ Wright from Dayton. Dayton, Nevada. I just had the misfortune of traveling to that foreign nation on the other side of the Sierras. And it was curious to note that the excess water in the state of California, seventy-eight percent of it is draining into the ocean. And not too many weeks ago, we had a joint meeting with Churchill County to discuss water. And this board listened to a lot of words from the state agencies that are collecting data and have been for several years developing working models, which will probably be useless because the data will be outdated by the time they get there. I would like to urge this board to raise on the priority list the discussion of water, perhaps invite back the gentleman. I believe his name was Jensen from the Water Sub Conservancy because he had goals and some objectives to to meet to deal with water. The excess water in the Carson River now is only impounded at Lake Bahontin. After that, it goes into the sink. We we need to start looking at ways of increasing reclamation of our excess water, somehow getting it back into the aquifer. Maybe a joint meeting with our adjoining counties and a workshop on how to deal with excess water when we have some, because this is probably going to be the driest February on record. We just had a wet January, but we have done very little to capture some of that excess water. And we don't have an ocean to drain it into, but draining into the desert doesn't make much sense either. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comment? Didn't look like anything on Zoom, so we will move on to possible action. Item five, review and adoption of agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
No opposition, so five or four, four-zero until item six, which is next. Time certain. For possible action, we're going to be swearing in Commissioner Hendricks. She's been appointed by the governor, so.
Please raise your right hand. Good afternoon, aye, station then. We saw this where?
We saw this where?
That will support.
That will support.
Protecting the friend.
Protecting the friend.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
That being from the United States.
And government of the United States.
The Constitution and government.
From the Constitution and government.
State of the data.
The state of the data.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
For domestic work.
For domestic supply.
And our there true faith.
And our there true faith and allegiance and loyalty to the same.
To the same.
And ordinance.
Any limit? Resolution on law.
Resolution on law.
On the state.
The biggest thing.
Aye, well, if you do the law.
And when I will, I will pay for the one.
All the duties of the office of Lyon County Commissioner.
All the duties of the office of Lyon County Commissioner.
I wish I had that.
I wish I had that.
Want to get a picture?
Just get a picture of all of us.
Get a picture in the front?
Right.
Now that you're already back. Just kind of get your history running in circles. Now that you're Commissioner. I am. Sir. This is like sworn in. I'm not gonna show you the scene. That's not.
Yeah. Yeah. Yes. Come on, mom. I don't want a mom.
No.
Mom, mom. Come on, mom. Mom, child, child.
Again, congratulations, Tim.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to item seven, presentation of awards. I believe Shayla will be coming up.
Good morning, Shayla Holmes, Director, Lyon County Human Services and Public Guardian. I don't usually say the public guardian part of the title. When talking with the community, most people don't understand what a public guardian is or what that role entails. So real quick, a guardian is appointed when an individual is identified to not have the capacity to make decisions for themselves anymore. So a judge appoints a guardian. Ideally, this would be a family member or a friend, but when individuals aren't, these individuals aren't available or willing, the public guardian gets appointed. You might ask how somebody's identified as not having capacity anymore. And this typically takes a major event in their lives, such as adult protective services being involved, identifying there's abuse, neglect, or exploitation. Sometimes a major medical event where they've ended up in the hospital at Mallory Behavioral Health Crisis Center. When the public guardian gets appointed, you can imagine individuals aren't usually excited to meet us. They're being told they no longer have the right to make decisions for themselves. And this is the highest level of care the county has to offer its community, and it's required by unrest to have one. As public guardians, we find ourselves not only advocating and caring for those individuals we are protected, that are protected that we're appointed to, but also for general community members. As we find it critical to ensure that nobody loses their rights unless it's absolutely necessary for their safety. As you can imagine, it takes an individual with a high level of integrity, patience, and commitment to do this job well. Debbie Stevens is all of those things and her dedication to the individuals of whom we are appointed to protect is above par. She works weekends, she takes calls in the middle of the night when somebody's having an emergency, be it a real one or just one they believe is one. She tailors her approach to each individual to make sure that they're comfortable with the process along the way. And many times Debbie is the only person these individuals have at the end of life. And she ensures their comfort and wishes are followed all the way through to the end. Every case is different and most of them are very complex. And very little about this work is easy. Example, last year there was an individual who was abandoned at the hospital, for lack of a better word. The family dropped them off. They took the spouse, decided they could care for one, but not both. And they left that individual and left the state. That individual was left at the hospital with nothing but the clothing they were wearing. This individual has a diagnosis of dementia and some other disabilities as well. And as you can imagine, the hospital said, somebody's got to make decisions for this person, and the public guardian was appointed. I paint the picture of the public guardian offices all doom and gloom. But you guys have Debbie that paints it in a different light. So she sent me this email a few months after. One reason I love what I do, I'm quoting Debbie here, is a copy and paste minus some names. One reason I love what we do is, for example, this individual came to us with basically nothing. No money, no clothes, et cetera. Now this person is safe, has clothing, and currently has almost ten thousand dollars in their account. Their bills are paid and soon we'll be able to get them placed somewhere new and better for them. When I was just updating this journal, it really made me smile and reminded me why we do this for them and the others like them. Thank you Shayla for trusting me in this position. So I wanted to recognize Debbie because really I trust her in this position probably more than she should trust. It's more about me trusting her or her trusting me to give it to her. It's a partnership that we have and while I might be technically the boss, she's the one that does this work and she does amazing at it and I feel you guys really should hear about it. She doesn't want to say anything and I can't. Just thank you. We do want a picture though.
We're done again? Yeah.
You guys want to come down?
Of course.
A heart of gold.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. Okay. I know.
Commissioner comments. Commissioner Jacobson?
Thanks Chairman Hockaday. Just thank you very much Debbie, also Shayla for bringing Debbie forward today. Truly a pleasure and a privilege to have you in chambers today and and I can see that you probably have a heart of gold and stuff that tough to put on paper, but easy to see. Thank you so very much.
Commissioner Hendricks, any comments?
I just wanted to thank you guys for all the work that you do. I've been coming to these meetings for a while and it's apparent that you really do so much for our community.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, thank you very much for what you do. You help our most vulnerable citizens and you know, it's and not not just you Shayla, your whole your whole department. What you guys do is just amazing. And we really appreciate all your hard work and efforts. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Keller?
Yes, I'd have to say the same thing everybody else has already said, and thank you very much for your work.
And Debbie, thank you so much for the effort you put into it. Obviously, you enjoy your work and you enjoy working with the people that need your help and that's very much appreciated by them and us. Thank you. So we're going to move on to number eight, Commissioners. Love good comments. Let's start with Commissioner Jacobson again.
Get a lead off. Thank you Chairman Hockaday. Just a few things. First, I'd like to welcome Ms. Hendricks to the County Commission in viewing and seeing and watching you through the planning commission. I think you you will do a great job here. You'll be about county business, not monkey business, and that's that's going to be appreciated from my standpoint. Also, city council meeting last night for Fernley. I appreciated Mayor McIntyre's state of the city kind of address. Listening to the accomplishments, the challenges and future projects that lie ahead of the city. And while I'm not huge on grandstanding, I I think that's something that we could maybe incorporate here into the county, give the department heads a chance to kind of summarize three hundred and sixty-five days of their cruise and their hard work. Highlight some of the challenges that lie before us for the public's for the public to hear and and then just kind of line out some of the goals and and how we can attain and reach some of those and meet those challenges. So I would encourage us to maybe following something like that. And that's all I have for now. Chairman.
Commissioner Keller?
Well, got a few things. Congratulations, Tammy. We just got back from Washington DC and I'll led Commissioner Henderson and and County Manager Haskins to talk more about what I don't cover. But it was it was a great experience to go there. We had the contacts, meeting with all the members of NACO. They're all good friends of mine, but also the members that were that weren't members, the people that attended from the different counties that that are acquaintances of mine that I could find out what they were working on and we could teamwork going moving forward. We met with our delegation for with senators. That was really productive. We'll bring a lot of stuff forward, I believe, along with Amadee and Horford. So it was it was real productive. I think you're going to see more in the future of what we bring forward out of that. The Governor Lombardo is also does a favor on appointing some people to positions. I know that Tracy Larkin Thomason was a a good acquaintance of mine, got N.D. Director and also Cole Martinson, who's the Deputy Director. So I think that's a good good thing for Lyon County moving forward. Bob Lucy got named as Director of Infrastructure. He's a former Commissioner out of Washoe and I when we do agenda requests, I'll put something in about him moving forward. Just had a great time, learned a lot, and I can't wait to bring this stuff as it progresses forward to everyone.
Commissioner Harrison?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Commissioner Keller said, we did just get back from DC. Yesterday was a long travel day. We had productive meetings in in Washington. Still going to process a lot of stuff, probably make a more complete report at our next meeting after we go through some things. One thing I do want to mention that that was encouraging was that Congress is putting through a requirement that the new newly released ruling on waters of the United States has to have congressional approval before it can be implemented, which is which is a good thing because this is a ping pong ball. Depends on who's in office, what what is considered waters of the United States and what is not. So I'm glad that the Congress is going to review that. I'm really glad that both our County Manager and Commissioner Keller got to go to DC. I want to thank Andrew. He put together a very good briefing book that we left behind with the delegation and more importantly with their staff that shows some of the projects that we that we have ongoing or planned that we could certainly use federal funding to to help us complete. And with that, I think I'm gonna let let my jet lag brain rest and make comments later. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hendricks?
Obviously, I don't have anything to report since I just got here, but I'm grateful to be here and looking forward to serving the people of Lyon County.
Mr. Chair, if I may, one thing I I did forget. I also want to congratulate you and welcome you to the commission and I look forward to working with you.
And I'll make it quick here. Again, congratulations, Commissioner Hendricks. I do appreciate Commissioner Keller and Commissioner Henderson and County Manager and Andrew Haskin for going to DC. Gee, I'm really sorry I didn't make it. Sometimes surgery is better than going to DC. Where do I sign up? Just I've been there before, so we'll see how it goes next time. You know, going to the Walker River Irrigation District meeting and you find out all of our problems with flooding and deep snow and shoveling snow and doing all that kind of stuff is certainly they're all grateful because of the amount of water that we're going to get out of this. The lakes are going to fill. We'd love to have some extra places to store the water as Mr. Wright was talking about, and that can certainly be something that's discussed in the future. But we always need a lot of water in the desert. And we're definitely going to get some this time. There are some places that are going to fill up. And we will have irrigation close to normal for this next this next year. Other than that, I will pass it over to County Manager Haskin for his report.
All right. Good morning, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. I'll keep my comments pretty brief this morning as well. We got in about midnight last night, so I'm I'm pretty tired, but no, it was it was a great trip. Really want to thank Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Keller for going on that trip and you know, I I think that our participation in the in National NACO is very important. Learned a lot of lot of stuff, see how other counties are tackling problems that that we have or are tackling problems that maybe we don't have that come up in the future. So it's really good to hear that kind of stuff and be able to plan and be able to get some some really good ideas out of it. It was really great meeting with our congressional delegation there. A lot of good stuff came out of those meetings. We met with staff. We were able to meet with Senator Cortez Masto actually twice. While we were there, really appreciate them taking the time to meet with us. As both Commissioner Henderson and Commissioner Keller mentioned, we will be bringing back some more information as we kind of get a little bit further down the road, but really want to focus on trying to capture as many federal dollars for some of the programs that we already have for some of the projects that we're already looking to complete that we know we need to to get funding for. So that's going to be something that'll be a priority in the next in the coming months. So look forward to sharing more about that as as we move along. Oh, yeah, thank you. Also, I want to congratulate Commissioner Hendricks. With her appointment to the County Commission, we do have a vacancy on the planning commission. We will be accepting apps, applications through March sixth. They'll be heard on the sixteenth, so if anybody wishes to apply to be on the planning commission, we encourage that you do that. The applications are submitted to our office, submitted to Aaron, and so I just I want to make sure that that is out there for everyone that they know that that's open. And thank you, Aaron, for the reminder.
At all?
That's it.
Outstanding. Thank you. Elected official report. We have any elected officials that want to speak? Looks like we do. Sheriff Pope?
Morning, Sheriff Pope, for the record. First, congratulations, Ms. Hendricks, for working with you. Second, I don't have much report, not jet lag, just tired. But on January third, asked the commission for twenty-four thousand five hundred for joiner and associates for outside agency testing. Just want to let you guys know that that process concluded last week and we were able to promote six people straight down the list based on their test results. It's a company I look forward to using in the future. We've asked for a certain amount of money in the budget next year to be set aside for that testing process, but the administration's mind is a success and just want to thank you guys for allowing us to use those funds to utilize our resources. That's all I get.
Questions?
Thank, thank you Chairman Hockaday. Sheriff Pope, just a couple of things. First of all, I did chat with an officer who will remain unnamed. But they were very impressed with your new system for promotions and the process for which for which your our staff can put in for 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 that. So just to give you some feedback, kind of I guess secondhand rumor mill, whatever, but it was, it seemed to be very well received and that'll go a long ways towards staff morale. And we all know staff morale and mission accomplished go hand in hand. So I think that's a great new system you put in. And then second, we had a few weeks ago, I don't want to blow it out proportionally, but it seemed like kind of a standoff there across from Fernley High. And it seemed like from the report that was given to the Fernley City Council last night, that the person that did that made bail or whatever, and they may have left the area. When someone leaves the area, I mean, we don't want to necessarily ship our problem somewhere else or something. What process do we go through to make sure that wherever they go to, they're fully aware of the situation? Do we do any of that or is it just they're free to go?
So if we know where that individual went, we'll absolutely notify the police or sheriff's office in their area. Most of the time, unless they're on a court monitor program with an ankle bracelet, we're unable to track them and unable to know where they go. It was rumored that he went to Winnemucca and is on his way out of the country. However, there's no way for us to verify that. So we will give Winnemuccapedia a heads up. He bailed, I believe, two days ago. And we will give them a heads up that he is in the area, but it's our understanding that that's his first stop on his way back to his native country.
Right, I guess. I guess so he's planning on skipping bail then?
That's what it sounds like.
Right. And so it seems like Lyon County may be flipping the bill for some overtime and some whatnot. Is there anything we can do to go up to this cat's property or whatever?
So unfortunately, he lived with his parents.
We'll go after his parents, Tom.
That might be more appropriate for the district attorney to ask.
I agree. I just I I agree. I just I just take that fact that Lyon County citizens are flipping the bill for some guy that totally lost his marbles.
Uh, unfortunately, that that's our end of the bargain on uh the majority of crimes committed.
I can only imagine how frustrating your job is someday, man. So I appreciate it. Thank you, Chairman Hakiday. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Um, Commissioner Hendricks?
I just wanted to say that it's been really nice to see representatives from the Sheriff's Department at all the advisory board meetings and interacting with the public.
Thank you.
Commissioner Keller, anything? Commissioner Hendricks, anything? Okay. Um, just one uh little thing that I I was able to go through Wilson Canyon today, which is of course open five AM to eight AM. Uh, what I noticed, this is a heads up, I don't think it's that big of a deal during the daytime, but I was on this side of Wilson Canyon in about seven fifty, and I noticed people trying to make it to Wilson Canyon by eight AM, probably doing eighty, ninety. I know it's just a civil infraction now, but they were moving pretty fast heading towards so they could make it by the eight AM. So I don't, you know, I don't blame them. They want to get through, but uh tonight between five and eight PM, they might be doing eighty, ninety, a hundred miles an hour. And I'd be a little concerned about the other residents in our county that might be near them when they get out of control. So just just something about that new Wilson Canyon opening that uh gonna be new and exciting for all of us.
So when you put a time limit on something, it's like the thirty minutes or less for a pizza, the guy's gonna speed, so you don't get.
Got to get there. Yep.
I will notify NHP of that issue, and I will also notify our uh Southern Command of that issue as well.
Yeah, I'm I'm just concerned concerned about the safety issue.
One hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other elected officials? I don't see anybody jumping up. Anybody on the board? Nobody on the board. Uh, we'll move on to appointed official reports. Nobody jumping up there? Anybody on the board? Oh, okay, Mr. Homestead.
Morning, Doug Homestead, Facility Director for the Record. Welcome to um new Commissioner Hendricks. Look forward to working with you guys. Um, had a couple of things to bring up. Um, first of all, um, we finished up on the CDVG grant for the Mount House uh Community Center. Thanks to Aaron and Andrew. Um, Aaron especially, she's done a whole bunch of work on that, and I think she submitted it today or tomorrow. Um, so thank you for that. Also, one I might want to bring up um in Dayton is the electronic sign that's in the park. If you know, all knows is probably not, hasn't been working for quite a while. We've been um my admin assistant in Dayton usually is the one that programs that, and the sign uh quit working, and we had someone look at it, the sign company said it's not fixable. We had a a guy, electrician from the utilities, look at it, and he's he found a part that was fried in it, and he thinks he can fix it. It's so um we've had the uh Dayton Preservation Society come to us and wants to like to take it over the programming of it and also fixing it for us, which is a lot better than my admin assistant going down there and doing it, and they can put their items that they want for the Dayton community on that board that way. So I'll be bringing forward that when we get the agreement made up on that. So just wanted to get you aware of that. Any question you have for me?
Questions? No questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Any other appointed officials? Move on to advisory board reports. Do we have any advisory boards that need to report? And look like that either. Oh, okay, Mr. Obermeyer.
Okay. Oh, I'm just figuring out how to unmute myself. Thank you, uh Chairman Hakiday. I just wanted, uh, this is Eric Obermeyer. I'm the Chair of the Silver City Advice Report, and I just wanted to update the the Commission on a couple of things going on in Silver City. Um, just a little bit of background. One issue is our cemetery expansion, and especially for you, Commissioner Hendricks, uh, this has been in the works for for a while. Um, just base some basic information. We're running out of space in the Silver City Cemetery. Uh, I think we have about seven uh spaces left and um, given the demographics of the town, that's just not going to be adequate. So there is a county parcel uh adjoining the existing cemetery, which uh we want to expand into. Um, unfortunately, the landscape there is is a very shallow uh uh overburdened or topsoil and and uh uh exposed bedrock is kind of the deal there. So the solution to that is to bring in Phil and landscape it and and use that uh area for cemetery expansion. Um, I'd like to say, uh, or I'm happy to say that the community has really stepped up uh in order to move this forward. Um, Steve Havman actually has offered to donate use of uh significant uh his uh heavy equipment. Uh, the the solution, of course, is to bring in, bring in Phil from somewhere or use Phil from the existing site. Uh, so Steve has offered to uh donate his equipment. We'll have to raise money to provide his uh provide his fuel cost. Uh, with respect to sources of Phil, Dustin Page has offered to donate Phil from his property in Dayton, and also uh Commissioner Henderson uh noted that there might be a source at the at the site of the uh the Boys and Girls Club. Uh, and Cindy Etchegoyen is organizing a town yard sale on Memorial Day uh to raise some of the money. Uh, so anyway, it's still definitely in the planning stage, uh but we're working forward with it. And but I really wanted to uh make sure that um actually, one of the main reasons I'm here is that e- even though this is a community effort, um, we do understand that at the end of the day, when the project's completed, it'll still be of a county responsibility. So we definitely want to keep in touch and and keep in communication uh with with the county, with the facilities people as we as we go along uh with this. Uh, other issue was was the uh uh handicapped access to the community center. Um, there's a there is existing handicap access from a handicapped parking spot to the main entrance of the building. The main entrance of the building is on uh the that side of the building has a a boardwalk, uh which is, and then in adjacent to the boardwalk is a grassy area. Unfortunately, in the past, well, actually, what what we've decided is is um there is a safety issue for sure. Because this boardwalk is is at a really unusual heights above the grassy area. So we've had instances in the past where people step off the boardwalk onto the grass, and it's a little higher than they've anticipated, and they do a face plant in the grass. Other people going the other way, the step is just a little bit higher than they anticipate, so they stumble and fall on the on the boardwalk. There's a an easy solution to that, which Judge Smith uh has suggested for us, which would simply to rope off that section of 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 the porch. But in discussions of that, it turns out what another issue uh with respect to handicap access is we have a handicap parking space and easy access to the community center from there. However, there's also a picnic area and stage area in the park adjacent to the community center. And there's no, there is no handicap access in the, there's no easy handicap access from that picnic and stage area to the uh community center and most importantly to the restroom in the community center. So uh the solution to that then, which uh we've uh worked on with Judge is to put a handicap access ramp from one end of the porch to a sidewalk, which then leads to the uh to the stage and the picnic areas. So uh we're looking forward to to hopefully that happening uh happening in the next year. Uh, anyway, so now you're up to date with everything that's going on in Silver City. I I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Commissioners. Any questions?
Just a comment.
Oh, a comment from Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I I uh noticed when I drove by the Boys and Girls Club this morning, that dirt's still there, so it is available, so. Now we see I have to figure out how to get it from there to the cemetery, but I know the boys, I know the Boys and Girls Club would like to get rid of it, so maybe when when the weather warms up, we can work on that.
Yes, yeah, right, right now. In fact, the next step, I think, is to uh get together with with Judge and uh uh probably yourself and other people just to look at, look at the actual land, landscape, et cetera, and get a get a clearer picture of exactly what we need to do. Uh, it is, it is, uh, it does turn out that um the existing cemetery lasted us for, my gosh, I think it's forty, fifty years. Um, so so we can, we could look at expanding more along the size of that area versus a my, initially, we had thought of a pretty large uh adding, you know, creating a pretty large space, but we might need to, uh, we might be able to to reduce that. But in order to do that, yeah, we need to get everybody out to look at it on the ground, which will, we can do when the snow melts. Right now, there's a big snow drift on it. Oh, and one thing that I forgot to do, um, I really want to thank Judge Smith for his help in in all these projects, uh including uh patiently listening to a lot of back and forth in the last advisory board meeting about the the handicap rap uh ramp, so um, we really thank him. He's really doing a great job with this.
Commissioner Keller.
This is just comment because I don't want to get into discussion or anything about something that could come before us in the future, so I just want to make a comment that uh I believe Comstock Mining at one time offered to bring in the dirt from right there at the mine, uh right there in Silver City, do all the work and everything else, and because they were contentious with the mine, they said no. So this could have been done cheaper and done with already, and so I, when we get the chance to talk about that kind of stuff, I'd love to bring it, bring in some of the history on some of the projects that have been on there.
Any other comments or questions? Uh, thank you, Mr. Obermeyer.
You're welcome.
Any other advisory board reports? You see anything? All right, so we are ready to move on to consent agenda. Excuse me. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners with one action and without any extensive hearing. Any member of the board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda discussed and acted upon separately during this meeting. Looks like her consent agenda is twelve A through sixteen B. Uh, do we have any requests?
I'd like to.
Commissioner Keller.
I would like to uh poll thirteen A. Discuss.
And I see Commissioner Jacobson.
I just wanted to ask a question to our, um, I guess it'd be our DA on fourteen A.
Okay. Yeah.
So. So uh Chairman Hakiday, I'd like to approve the consent agenda. Pulling um thirteen A and fourteen A for brief discussion, so that would be approving twelve A and then all of fifteen and all of sixteen, approving that.
So twelve A through sixteen B minus thirteen A and fourteen A.
Thank you.
As a section, and do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of the consent agenda with the items polled, say aye.
Aye. Public comment.
Okay, um, you have public comment on that. It is possible. Thank you. Uh, do I have any public comment on that? Any other items from the public that want to be polled and discussed? Seeing none, then we will go ahead and vote. All those in favor of twelve A through sixteen B with minus thirteen A and fourteen A, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. So let's move on then to thirteen A uh for possible action. Approve February second, twenty twenty-three minutes. Uh, Commissioner Keller, that was your item?
Yeah, I want to uh discuss uh twenty-one A. Where I made the motion, Commissioner Keller acknowledged the finding of fact and conclusion of law regarding open meeting law complaint and so on. That's not the motion that I made. I wouldn't have voted for that motion if it was made that way. Uh, my motion was that we acknowledge the opinion from the Attorney General's Office with attached supporting materials of his findings affecting conclusion of law and open meeting law complaint. So I would like that, but but in the minutes to reflect exactly what the motion was that we voted on, and I have a copy of the motion that I can give to them.
Well, I see County Manager standing forward. Uh, yes.
Um, yeah, my recommendation on this one would be to um pull the minutes off of this agenda, not not take any action on this item, and um we'll we'll have the clerk's office review the review the audio on that and we'll we'll make any corrections that need to be made on that on that item. I, we might have to do a motion to table. Yeah, so.
Looking for a motion and to poll thirteen A and uh review and also bring it back next time with the corrections if necessary. Do I have a motion on that?
I'll make a motion just exactly the way you stated it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of pulling thirteen A for review and bringing it back in the next agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Uh, excuse me, sorry.
Just the item number or the.
You you'll need to do public comment before you.
Oh.
Public comment, got got. Got to remember that.
It was my fault. I'm gonna kick you.
Yeah, you you need to keep. My fault, okay. Uh, public comment, and I see we have the District Attorney coming up. Okay, no, no comment. All right, so we have the uh vote again then, since now I have no public comment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
I'm gonna abstain because I wasn't.
Abstain, you weren't part of it. Okay, so I have uh four aye and one abstention because she wasn't here for that uh session for Commissioner Hendricks. Okay. And uh District Attorney Wright, I know that I had to explain for the record why I abstained. Was that uh a good enough explanation that since she wasn't here for that meeting, we can put that for the record?
That's adequate.
All right, thank you. So that that stands then. Uh, let's move on to fourteen A contracts, and that was for possible action. Approve agreement with Thompson Reuters for public law library access at the District Court for the five years at the rate of six hundred and ninety-four dollars per month, the first year with four percent increase each year thereafter. And uh Commissioner Jacobson, you had that pulled. What's, what would you like to?
Thank you, Chairman Hakiday. Um, Mr. Wright, I was just curious. I wanted to chat with this a little bit by, first of all, built-in increases always. It's like, okay, I get that, but the six hundred and ninety-four per month, where where does that money come from?
Uh, that's probably a Josh question, but I, Steve Wright, District Attorney.
Bring it to this guy.
Yeah.
District uh District Court budget, but Josh would be better to address that.
Josh Floyd, Lyon County Council for the Record, and we want an official minutes. He's a genius. He's the District Court Budget, which they hit. And that's what's currently being paid on it.
And that's for the public access.
Which is required by law.
And I guess my question is, in this day of internet and accessibility of stuff, I mean, you start adding that up for five years, seven hundred dollars, five years, and throw in four percent increases. Is there something cheaper out there that you can subscribe to? That would satisfy this because this is a lot of money.
Our two options are to provide a hard copy in paper, which is what we used to do to the public, which is very expensive, or to provide it online through law resource such as Westlaw. This is the uh the one that we use throughout the county and have discounted prices because of that, but I realize it's an expensive thing. It's unfortunately. I realize it's an expensive thing. It's unfortunately one that we're required to do. And I believe it's the least expensive of the options we have to answer the question.
Right. I'm, and I didn't, I should have maybe done some research, see if there's something out there cheaper, but then that's. And then is there a ticker on that to tell you how many times it's used in a year? No. So we have no idea what's what.
Right. For us, it doesn't matter for us how many times it's used a year. We're required to provide it by state law, whether it's for one person or fifty people or no people, it was the available.
Right. And, and I, I don't know. It just seemed like, so every county is doing something like this.
Every county is required to do something like this. I can't touch.
So they're required to.
Yes.
Wonder if it would behoove us to go, even if it was just the cow counties, go in together and see if we couldn't come up with something that was less expensive, maybe something at a next meeting or Naco or something where we discuss this because it seems like we could save some money here.
Andrew Haskin, County Manager for the record. So I'm not sure with this specific one, but usually, um, how those licenses work is it's for either a certain, it's for one county or something. So if we were to partner with other counties, it may cost, um, it would probably costing the same. I'd have to do some research on this specific one. I just, um, just wanted you to be aware of that. We can do some research certainly, um.
Well, it sounds like we're going to be locked into five years. So it sounds like you got a five-year chance to look into.
Okay.
Thank you, guys. I was just, I don't know.
Missioners, any other?
So, no, Chairman Hockaday.
I was just going to say.
Make a motion to approve fourteen A, um, prove agreement with Thompson Reuters for public law library access at the District Court for the five years at the rate of six hundred and ninety-four dollars per month. The first year with a four percent increase each year after.
Okay, I have a motion and, um, there should be public comment here. I was going to make sure we, make sure the public has a chance to say anything about this item. Uh, I did have one thing to say. I, I agree with you, uh, Commissioner Jacobson. I looked at that and said, whoa, you know, eight thousand four hundred dollars, basically the first year and then more four percent every year thereafter. And I read through it to see if there was anything other than required by law. And that one. That, yeah, I guess that, uh, the District Attorney's Office probably would love to have that money for something else, but I totally agree with your logic on that. So that's my comment. Any other comments from the board? I don't see any public comments, so let's go ahead and vote on this issue. Didn't get a second yet?
No.
Oh, second. Didn't hear a second. Okay. Who has a second?
It doesn't matter.
Got it? Right? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor of fourteen A, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, everybody agrees on fourteen A, five zero. All right, let's move on to ask consent agenda. Back to regular. Seventeen. Are going to be taking action on all items unless otherwise noted. Seventeen A for possible action to point up to two members to the Debt Management Commission as a member at large with terms expiring. Actually, term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. We have one application. Have any comments from the board?
I'll make a motion, Chairman Hockaday, if you're ready.
Okay. Do I have any public comment first, though? No? Okay, then I'm ready for the motion.
Um, Chairman Hockaday, I'll make a motion to appoint, uh, Charles Lawson to the Debt Management Commission as a member at large with his term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Jacobson. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Commissioner Hendricks has a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So pass five zero. Seventeen B for possible action to point up to six members to the Lying County Fair Board with terms expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. We have Charlotte Guthrie, Crystal White, Mindy Flair, and John Fielding as applicants. So we have four for six positions. Do I have any comments from the board? Support Commissioner Jacobson?
Thank you, Chairman Hockaday. Uh, just for curiosity, six members, did the entire board resign?
Um, Aaron Lopez for the record, um, this board, I believe, has at least twelve members on it.
Oh.
It's, they have a lot of work that they did on the fair. So they have a lot of members.
So the more the merrier. Got it. All right. With that, I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. Any other comment, public comment? And I'm ready for a motion.
Chairman Hockaday, make a motion to appoint Charlotte Guthrie, Crystal White, Mindy Flair, John Fielding to the six-member Lying County Fair Board with terms expiring December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six, and like to thank them for putting in.
Okay. We have a second.
Yes, I'll second that.
Okay, second by Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, so you have your four, for the six spots available, um, passes five zero. Seventeen C for possible action to point up to one member to the Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement Advisory Board, and we have Beverly Smith. I don't see, is there a term expiration date on that?
Aaron Lopez for the record again, um, on this board, there is not a term defined. They graciously stay on there forever.
Oh. Wow. Or as long as they want. Yeah, okay.
As long as we have mosquitoes.
Yes. John. Okay. Anything else on that, uh? It's Lopez. No? So any other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Then let's move on with, uh, motion.
Make a motion.
Okay. Commissioner Keller.
Motion to appoint Beverly Smith to the Mason Valley Mosquito Abatement Advisory Board.
Grab a second.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes five zero. Move on to County Manager. It's like for possible action review and approve a contract with Silver State Government Relations for Government Relation Services and to work with Walker and Associates for the remainder of the eighty-second session of the Nevada Legislature with an estimated cost of ten thousand dollars to be funded from a contingency budget transfer. Uh, Mr. Haskin.
All right, Andrew Haskin, Lying County Manager for the record. So we had discussed this item in January, um, a bit about what our plan was moving forward. Um, remember that item was, uh, to provide direction to the County Manager to, um, and the outcome of that was we, we sought letters of intent, um, regarding us bringing on a second, um, second lobbyist for this session. Um, we've used Walker and Associates for, geez, I want to say the last twenty-five or thirty years, and they are retiring at the end of this session. Um, and talking with Mary Walker, their preference would be, um, to have that kind of, this last session as a handoff period, um, to work with whoever we are, um, whoever we want to select moving forward. I did have a conversation, um, so, so you're familiar, um, and I know I've, I've talked about this before, but we have a coalition with Story County and with Douglas County. Um, and so we, you know, we feel like we, uh, have a bit more say in the legislature with that coalition because it represents a larger population. Um, and that's something that I think is really important to keep going. Um, and, um, so one of the considerations, so to, I, I did some kind of asking around, couple of names came up, Silver State Government Relations was one of them. There was another firm, um, that I would, I reached out to as well. Um, they ended up not submitting a proposal. They declined because they had a conflict with another client. Um, their other client viewed it as a conflict to work with us. So, um, what, uh, and so, um, I know Sil- uh, Story County has hired Silver State Government Relations, um, as well, and their intent is to have, um, Ms. Rather and his group, uh, basically fill the role that Mary Walker is filling. So in order to keep that coalition together, I, I think that it is a good idea to, to go with Silver State Government Relations. I know Will Adler is here and I, I, um, asked him to speak just a, a little bit briefly about, uh, his company and and then answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you, Major. Uh, I am Will Adler. I'm the Principal of Silver State Government Relations. Uh, we're a government relations firm based in Carson City, Nevada. Uh, my, my firm is a, a bit of an odd one. I started in two thousand seventeen after working with two different, uh, government relations firms. And then my mom actually joined my firm, so we are a family firm, but my mom, uh, is, uh, well-known in rural Nevada as the former Director of USDA Rural Development. And through our, our sort of tangential formation, uh, I, I first started with a governmental entity, a pyramid like Paiute Tribe. Uh, and then we started working with Tahoe Reno Industrial Center, the GID, and then Story County itself hired us, uh, all around the, uh, defense around innovation zones, is sort of the project, uh, that wasn't, uh, that was to give a California billionaire the top half of Story County. So we jumped right in and, uh, really, uh, dug deep into county businesses with that one. Uh, formerly I worked at Carson City in the Water Subconservancy and we, we do, uh, continue some relations there, but today we're proud of representatives of Story County and we, uh, honor Rep. Lying County and anything you guys, uh, require of us.
Questions? I think, uh, Commissioner Henderson had a question.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Not a, not a question really, but a comment. Mr. Adler, good to see you. Um, I've had the, the, the pleasure of knowing and working with Mr. Adler for several legislative sessions. And, uh, I'm confident he will do a good job for Lying County and and helping us to defend against actions legislature will take. And, you know, and I've also known his mom for a long time too, so we can't go wrong with them too. So when you're ready, Mr. Chair, I'd love to make a motion.
Okay, any other comment?
Before we.
Yeah, yeah, I have.
Commissioner Keller, he will have a comment too.
So I've also met Will on several occasions, but I've actually done work with, uh, his mom quite often. Uh, very familiar with him. Uh, what, I'm not, nothing against, uh, the Adlers at all or anything like that. I'm just talking about this process. And right now we're going with just one person because the other one's backed out because conflicts of interest. But at the same time, are those contracts, conflicts of interest ending at the end of this year? In other words, are they already tied to something that, that conflict might go away by the end of this year to where they could possibly back to where we could have more options? Uh, I'm also looking at, we already pay the Walkers to be our, our, uh, lobbyist right now. Now we're bringing on that extra cause that we might not be continuing the contract with the Adlers at the end of the year. So the way, how does this benefit the additional dollars that we're going to be asked out of us? So I'm, I'm kind of not comfortable with this. This at this point.
I may as well, and then allow the County Manager. We're, we're integrating Mary Walker and Walker Associates today as Silver State Government Relations. We work with them through Story County, those relations, and we've already started, you know, integrating with Lying County and your, your request as well. We've, we've set up meetings with the Governor's Office. We've been able to, you know, help her in, in backup her efforts because it is a large building with a lot to do in it. And, and we feel like, uh, the support it will provide her uh, is beneficial. And then her, her information to us is, is really guided our process and how to do county management from Story County's point of view. And I think it'll help out with Lying County as well to have that interim process, but allow the County.
Yeah, um, Andrew Haskin, Lying County Manager. So, um, to answer your question on the, on the other lobbyist group, I, I have no idea. I have no way of knowing, uh, you know, if, if they're going to continue the relationship with their client, uh, um, I just know that they declined to to, um, put in a proposal at this time. Um, and so I have no idea on that. Um, you know, with the, with, um, so specific to Silver State Government Relations, uh, like, like I, I already mentioned, Story County has already hired them, um, with the intent of having them take over for the Walker, Walkers after this session. Um, and so if we want to keep that coalition together, the, um, I, I think it's really important to, to go with the same firm. So um, you know, I hope that provides a little bit more context and information there. Um, you know, as far as the cost, cost is concerned, it was something that we had discussed at that meeting in January. Actually, it's either December or January. I, I don't remember. Um, to, to take a look and see what was out there. And so, um, you know, we didn't have a, a figure in mind, this, uh, that the monthly fee that would be paying Silver State Government Relations is the same, roughly the same as, uh, what we would be paying the law companies as well. So, um, this contract is through the end of session, so it would be through June thirtieth. Um, and then we would have to negotiate another contract moving forward with, with, um, Mr. Adler's group. One thing I do want to point out is in that contract, I will have to adjust the dates a little bit because we started this process a while ago, um, the, we'll notice the contract date is in January, so I will have to, have to adjust that a minute.
Commissioner Keller.
So it's, it's kind of going back to the same thing. And at the end of the, we've already paid for a lobbyist for this duration, and then we can pull someone up right afterwards for continuing work. Right? Uh, it sounds like he's already working with the Walkers so that we don't have to pay to train him to work with the Walkers and on our issues because it's kind of like the same issues. So that's the only thing that I'm uncomfortable with is we already paid for something. And now it's kind of like to me, I'd rather start with a new contract when we need to. I that's where I'm standing.
So what I will say is he's working with the Walkers on Story County's issues currently. So, um, he's not really becoming familiarized with with Lying County specific issues because we do have some different, different, uh, takes on things, so. That's, uh.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to, want to make sure that we are clear on this. This is a contract for this session, and there is no guarantee that there would be any future contracts awarded to Silver State. And Mr. Adler is aware of that.
Correct.
Okay. And and then one, one further comment on that. And this is not, not a knock at all against the Walkers. But the legislature has changed. And, um, they don't have the, the same type of, of legislators are, are younger and of a different generation. So I think that, that will help us also to have someone who can relate better on a generational basis than the Walkers may be able to.
Commissioner Hendricks. And I'll go back to Commissioner Jacobson. Did you have anything more?
At this time, no.
Any public comment?
Got Tony.
Okay, uh, has Tony on, uh, Zoom.
Thank you, Chair. Um, Tony Stevenson, Chair, Lying County Democrats. One of the issues that concerned us is that Walker and Walker has a permanently revoked business license in Nevada, according to the Secretary of State. Why are we doing business with a company that has permanently revoked license?
Um, my answer would be that's not on the agenda for that specific item. Um, you can always request that be discussed on a different agenda, on a different meeting.
It's just public comment. We don't have to respond.
You as far as, uh, the question, since it's a public comment, we are not going to respond to that unless you want to agendize it for another meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. Um, and congratulations to Commissioner Hendrick, uh, Hendricks on her appointment.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And again, if you'd like that address, please, uh, bring it up for an agenda in the future.
I'll reach out for that because it's concerning.
Okay, thank you. All right, any other pub- public comment? All right. Do I have a motion on this?
Mr. Chair, I would like to.
There is one more public comment.
One more comment. Oh. Uh, looks like Vita Keller has a comment.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to, to comment that, you know, we, we've had some long discussions on that commission uh, about, uh, future budgets and what we're looking at money-wise and just because we think we should have somebody shadow somebody. I just think we're, we're spending taxpayer dollars for double the efforts at this time. Um, you know, you guys are going to be getting. Uh, you know, you guys are going to be getting into budget discussions here very soon. And I'm sure your comptroller is going to be coming to you and, and painting a bleaker picture than we've had in the two years past. And I, I just think you should take that into consideration. Just because there's money and contingency doesn't mean we need to spend it.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? So let's go ahead and look for a motion eighteen A.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I moved that we approve a contract with Silver State Government Relations for government relation services and to work with Walker and Associates, Associates for the remainder of the eighty-second session of the Nevada Legislature with an estimated cost of ten thousand dollars to be funded from a contingency budget transfer.
Do I have a second? No second? If there's no second, then the motion dies. I guess that's, uh, we'll move on and. Eighteen B. For possible action to discuss and provide direction to the county manager regarding legislation for the eighty-second session of the Nevada Legislature. Legislation includes Assembly Bill sixty-three, Assembly Bill sixty-eight, Assembly Bill ninety-two, Assembly Bill one oh three, Senate Bill sixty-four, and Senate Bill eighty-one. And Mr. Haskin.
All right, Andrew Haskin, Lyon County Manager for the record. So this is kind of the first legislative update that I'm going to do, kind of trying to get the board's opinion on some of these, these, some of these bills coming forward. And so with that, I'll kind of get started. We do have to make a change in, in how we've done this, or I've already made a change in how we've done this to where we are listing out the bills that we will be discussing individually. So with that, I'll jump right into it. Assembly Bill sixty-three, that is on behalf of Story County. And it's an act relating to public safety, requiring the Director of the Department of Transportation and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to review, study, and prepare reports regarding certain issues that affect a certain segment of Interstate eighty in this state and providing other matters properly relating thereto. So what this does is it requires the Director of the Department of Transportation to conduct a study, a safety study on the segment of Interstate eighty between Vista Boulevard and the city of Sparks and Wadsworth. The study has to focus on several different things. So it's supposed to determine the feasibility and the fiscal amount necessary for designating that segment of Interstate eighty as a special safety corridor that has enhanced traffic, calming and control measures, reducing vehicular speed limits within the segment of Interstate eighty, restricting commercial trucks or vehicles with more than two axles to one lane of the highway within that segment of Interstate eighty, upgrading signage and beginning the process to add an additional lane within the, but in each direction within the next twenty-four minutes. It's also to establish a timeline for upgrading the Lockwood Interchange and the Patrick Interchange and establish a timeline for the completion of adding within that segment of Interstate one additional traveling in each direction. So it requires the NDOT Director to work with the county managers of Lyon, Story, and Washoe, and the cities of Ferley, Reno, and Sparks to, to put together that report. It actually doesn't require us to work, to work with them. It just requires them to reach out, but I think this is a good thing. And so I do want to get the bill's stand, or the, the board's stance on this bill. Anybody that's driven through that section of Interstate eighty knows that, especially during rush hour traffic, peak traffic, it's pretty crazy. And so they're trying to look at a way, at ways to make that safer, to reduce accidents. I know that prior to my moving to Lyon County, I used to drive through there every day. And if there was an accident, it would get closed down and then we'd be backed up all the way back into Reno. So that is just kind of a synopsis of Assembly Bill sixty-three. And Chair, I don't, I, I apologize. I, I don't know if you want to talk about each one of these individually or if you want me to finish the presentation and then we, we talk about each one individually. It's kind of whatever your, your preference.
I'd kind of like to do is just a quick synopsis of each bill that we're covering them and then we can basically address those that we have a question about. And I see Commissioner Keller, yes.
I, I would just like to see if we can roll back this screen just one, just so I can finish. Thank you. I just got some more reading to do.
Yeah. And again, this is just kind of a, of some, some highlights from the bill. Obviously, it would be a bit too much for me to include that the actual text in the slides. In the future, I will, we'll provide links to the, to the bill or I'll work with, with Aaron on how we get that information out a little bit. Oh, okay, perfect. Perfect, okay.
So that, is that okay with the board here that we just have a quick synopsis of basically how it relates to Lyon County? And then go back and discuss those that you have any concern or issue with? It sounded right? Okay, let's go ahead and do that.
Okay, all right. So Assembly Bill sixty-eight, this one is on behalf of Douglas County. And this is an act relating to juvenile justice, revising the manner in which the assessment imposed on certain counties for the operation of a regional facility for the treatment and rehabilitation of children is calculated and providing other matters properly relating thereto. So this is changing the funding formula for China Springs. This is the intent of this one. How it, how it, it changes it is it takes the total aggregated amount of assessments required to be paid by all counties subject to the requirements of subsection one. And it equals that to the total amount budgeted by the legislature for operations of the regional facility minus any money appropriated by the legislature for support. It sets that as the amount that all of the counties have to contribute. But then it breaks it down by county based on this funding formula. So basically, I, I did a really bad job of explaining that, but basically it takes the, the overall cost of providing the program, subtracts out what the legislature appropriates for it, and then it divides the rest of, the rest of that cost up among the counties with this funding formula. So the assessment owed by each assessed county equals a sum of fifty percent of the total aggregated, aggregated amount of assessments prescribed by Section Two divided by the total number of pupils in the state in the preceding school year, excluding pupils in counties whose population is seven hundred thousand or more, they have their own programs, and multiplied by the number of pupils in the county. And fifty percent of the total aggregated amount of assessments prescribed by Section Two, subsection two, divided by the total number of bed days at the regional facility for the two immediate preceding fiscal years and multiplied by the number of bed days used by the assessed county. So essentially it starts to, it gets pretty complicated, but essentially what it does is it, it bases our cost on an average of the number of beds that we've used, I think in the last three years. I was looking to see if Josh was still back there. Get the nod from him, but yeah, so it, it does change the way this is funded currently. There is, it does change the way this is funded currently. It likely will cost Lyon County a, a bit more, but that's because we use those services more than other counties. If we have several years where we don't, where it doesn't, then where we don't use those services as much, then our, our rate would go down. So it's just basing it off of what we, what we pay. This was kind of a negotiation between the counties on on how this, this works, so that this had been in discussions for quite some time before I.
Commissioner Jacobson, you have a question?
Well, treating this as a discussion item. Chairman Hockaday, thank you. Just, I've toured China Springs. We can talk about, this is crazy to me how complicated we can make something. My take, my sincere belief is we can either work with these kids. Some of them have, the, these are minors, working, where they may have terrible home lives, whatever, they're, they all have a different story, all right? We can either pay and help these kids get a high school diploma, get them on their way, or we cannot provide something like this. And we can pay, we've never seen anything as complicated as this for a prison system, which is crazy. We, we can have fifty thousand prisoners, but we're going to worry about twenty-five kids at China Springs, fifty kids, whatever. I say we, the legislature needs to support facilities like this so that we're not paying for these people their entire lives in a prison system. These kids got to get a chance, they got to, they, they have no chance without a high school diploma. They may not get the high school diploma without a facility such as China Springs. So I don't know why we would make this so difficult. I, I, I just, when I was reading this, I was just like, I was scratching my head. I'm like, that's crazy. We got a guy out on bail, ditching, leaving, and we're going to worry about dividing kids in education and some food in their belly, roof over their head. So what a waste of time, but I support China Springs. Thank you.
Commissioner Keller.
Thank you. Uh, this is just, we still support China Springs no matter either way, right? Uh, this is just the funding part of it.
It's to make it.
It's like, take your birthday and figure it out and add all this and then you end up with number three. I have no idea what went on, but it's amazing. So we're still supporting it. I'm, I'm lost on the, on the formula.
Well, let me, let me have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe, maybe I can help a little bit here, see if I can clarify this. The, the current, the current funding formula is based strictly on the, the the number of pupils you have in a county. Okay, so some of the counties that, that don't use the facility, I'm saying, well, that's not fair. We're, we're, we're paying this even though we don't use it. So this compromise formula takes fifty percent is still based on pupil population, but the other fifty percent is based on the number of bed nights you've actually used in that facility for, over the past year. So it's just to make it a little, little fairer for counties that don't use the facility as much.
And let me provide just a little more clarification. It's based off of, currently based off of school population. So, you know, by populate, not by school population, but by population, we're the third largest county in Nevada. So that might, well, right now, because we're, we're using the services more, it might cost us a little bit more in the short term and the future. It might actually, the, the current funding formula might actually disproportionately turn towards.
And, and, and one more thing to note, the, the governor did restore some of the cuts that were made to China Springs at the last legislative session in, in his proposed budget. So this hit probably won't be as bad, hopefully.
Yeah.
So, so thank you for explaining it a little bit better from, from my, from my perspective. It looks like we're just going to give a little relief to the counties that aren't using the facility, which on the greedy side, I, we're going to be losing on the, on the deal, but on the fair side, that would probably be a fair thing, so.
And long-term, as we grow, this, this type of funding probably actually benefit us. We did have some discussion back and forth about that, the length of time that that average is. And just because it might fluctuate and make it a little bit more difficult to budget for. But we think that on the whole, this is, this is probably, it makes sense.
Okay, no other questions from the board? Go ahead.
All right. Ninety-two, oh, no. Okay, Assembly Bill ninety-two. That's an act relating to counties authorizing the Board of County Commissioners to create by ordinance the Office of County Council, providing for the appointment of a county council, establishing the qualifications of a county council, authorizing the county council to afford, appoint deputies and certain other staff, setting forth the powers and duties of a county, county council, revising the responsibilities of the district attorney when the Office of County Council is created and providing other matters properly, properly relating thereto. That is a mouthful. There's no other way to do it. The bill is actually, I think, seventy-two pages long, so I did my best to go through it and provide an overview. So essentially what this does is, it says that a Board of County Commissioners may, by ordinance, create the Office of County Council, so it's not something that we have to do. And prescribe the compensation of that office and and then it provides how, that, in that ordinance, how that, that position would be filled. It says, and then it prescribes the duties for that, the qualifications and the duties for that office. So, and I, I will ask District Attorney Riddick to get up and speak a little bit about this. Just because this obviously would have an impact on his office, so we, he can discuss it a little bit more. But here's what the duties would include. Yeah, so attending the meetings of the Board of County Commissioners, when attending such meetings relating to the auditing of accounts and claims brought against the county, the county council shall oppose such accounts and claims as the county council deems appropriate, reviewing all contracts under consideration by the Board of County Commissioners, drafting ordinances and amendments thereto, providing advice relating to the interpretation of, or application of county ordinances, providing evidence relating to the impact of federal or state law on the county, drawing all legal papers on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, giving his or her advice, including written legal opinions when required to the members of the Board of County Commissioners upon matters relating to their district or, excuse me, to their duties, giving his or her legal opinion to any assessor, collector, auditor, or county treasurer, and to all other county township or district officers within his or her county and any matter relating to the duties of their respective offices representing the county in any civil matters relating to the abuse or neglect of a child pursuant to Chapter four thirty-two B of NRS. The county council shall not prosecute any criminal matters relating to the abuse or neglect of a child and performing such other duties as may be required by law. So that's again, a mouthful. Says a Board of County Commissioners shall not prescribe the responsibility for any criminal prosecution for the enforcement of any order relating to the support of a child to the county council and allows the county, county council may appoint deputies and administrative staff. So essentially it kind of separates out those duties from the district attorney's office and it's and creates a new office within, within the county. And I'll let District Attorney Rye, I don't know if you have anything to. Um, yeah, if you, if you know. An appropriate time.
Thank you, Steve Rye, District Attorney. This is a bill that's been in similar form presented to the legislature starting in twenty nineteen. And so it's come before the legislature in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty-one, and then this session again, sponsored by Assemblyman Koenig. The arguments against it from the DA's Association and certain district attorneys at the last couple of sessions, the primary one has been that it, one of the advantages of having an elected official serve as the council to the, the county is it's an independent position elected by the people. And if it's put under the county commission, there's a claim that it would not, no longer be independent because it's directly controlled by the commission. That's been one of the primary arguments for that. The last two sessions, I have come out against this bill and will likely do so this time. I'm not sure that NACO has taken a formal position yet, so I would ask the board to wait until that happens before you did, would take a position on this bill. The reasons that I would oppose it is that the district attorney has handled these functions for decades. And it has worked well, and I believe it continues to work well. I understand there have been. I understand there have been shortages, uh, with staff in the DA's office and attorneys, so the last year has not been, uh, necessarily easy. However, that I believe is a passing issue. And again, uh, the district attorney's elected and if not performing their job, uh, that's handled in the election every four years. Uh, the other concern I would have at this time with this bill, understanding that it just gives the option uh, for the board to do this. Uh, but at a time when, uh, budget issues are a little bit up in the air, the economy is a little bit up in the air. Uh, departments across the county are stretched for manpower and personnel. The option of creating a new department with new administration does not necessarily seem like a, a great idea at this time. Um, again, I understand the legislation is an optional provision for the county, which is good. The county needs options, however, uh, based upon those reasons, um, I'm opposed to this bill at this time. I can answer any questions.
Questions. Thank you for explanation. Appreciate that. And moving on to Bill one oh three.
All right, Assembly Bill one oh three. Already on it. This is, um, sponsored by, um, Assemblywoman Dickman and, uh, joint sponsor is Senator Titus. And this is an act relating to emergency management, requiring a state of emergency or declaration of disaster proclaimed by the governor to terminate after sixty days. Unless the legislature expressly approves the continuance of the emergency or disaster prohibiting the governor from proclaiming the existence of a state of emergency or declaration of disaster due to the same occurrence or threatened occurrence as that of an, an emergency or disaster which has terminated. Unless the legislature expressly approves the proclamation prohibiting the exercise of certain powers by the governor without the express approval of the legislative commission or the legislature and providing, um, other matters properly relating there too. So that's a pretty good summary of it, um, but it's, um, it basically says that a state of emergency or declaration of disaster proclaimed by the governor pursuant to subsection one terminates A, upon the proclamation of the termination thereof by the governor, so the governor can still end it before that sixty days. B, upon the passage by the legislature of a resolution terminating the emergency or disaster. So this gives the, the legislature the power to terminate a declaration of emergency that's proclaimed by the governor. Or C, unless expressly continued by a resolution of the legislature, sixty days after the date on which the emergency or disaster was proclaimed, whichever is earliest then. Um, and then subsection four there states that, um, essentially the governor can't use that same, to just declare a new emergency based off the same, uh, disaster. It has to be, um, it has to be, um, a new, new disaster, or the legislature would have to approve them to go back. And so, um, I think. And then it also changes the provisions relating to declaring a, a disaster. As far as declaring a business to be an essential or non-essential business. Essentially, it says the exercise of any power by the governor pursuant to subsection five of NRS, um, or NRS four fourteen oh six zero, um, which would declare a business to be an essential or non-essential business and impose a requirement on or otherwise restrictive the operation of a business in this state on such a basis does not become effective until the exercise of such power is submitted to the Legislative Commission as a regulation and approved by the Legislative Commission or expressly approved by the legislature by resolution. So essentially, if the governor is going to exercise that power to declare businesses essential or non-essential, they have to go back to the, uh, get approval from the Legislative Commission or the legislature. Um, and it says, any regulation submitted to the Legislative Commission pursuant to paragraph A of subsection six must uniformly apply to all businesses operating in the state without regard to the type of business or the product or service provided. Any questions on that one?
Mr. Chair.
Question, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, more of a comment than a question. I don't see how this is going to work, for one thing. Um, the legislature is not always in session. The governor declares a state of emergency. Sixty days are up. How are they going to act? They, it takes two thirds of both houses to, for them to call a special session. Um, second thing in comment, it may have a chance of passing because now we have a democratic legislature and a Republican governor. If we had a democratic legislature and a democratic governor, this bill would never pass.
Yeah, um, I'm, I imagine how it would work in practice is that if the governor wished to continue that, that emergency declaration for whatever reason, that he would have to call a special session or the, the legislature would have to do it. So, yeah, I I can't really comment as to whether it'll work or not, but, you know, that's that's really what I'm asking the board for is your take on it and how how we're going to.
I think they'll have to figure it out. So, any other questions? All right, we'll proceed with, uh, sixty-four then.
Senate Bill sixty-four is on behalf of the Lieutenant Governor, and it's an act relating to education, adding certain appointed members to the Board of Trustees of a county school district, providing that a certain appointed member serves as the president of the School Board of Trustees, requiring the legislative auditor to audit school districts and providing other matters properly relating there too. So this bill would essentially give the Board of County Commissioners, uh, the ability to, um, actually, I think it might be the requirement to appoint a member to the school board. And that member would then serve as the, um, president of the school board. So, um, it would also give any city whose population is sixty thousand or more the ability to appoint to the School Board of Trustees as well, um, but at the end of the day, the member that was appointed by the county commission would serve as the president of the school board. Um, and then it requires the legislative auditor or the designee of the legislative auditor, um, to perform an audit of all accounts, funds, or and other records of each school district of the state at least once every five years to determine whether funds appropriated from the state education fund are being used according to applicable laws and regulations, whether the financial statements of the audited school district comply with generally accepted principles of accounting, the honesty and integrity of fiscal affairs, the accuracy of and reliability of information and reports and the effectiveness of the system of management controls of the audited school district and weather control by management and the system of information provide an adequate and efficient system of records and accounting. My take on this one, I, it, um, it, it may not be a fight that the, the county wants to get in the middle of, but I, on, on this bill, um, certainly, um, you know, at the end of the day, the board has, has the decision making as to whether or not we, uh, support, oppose, or are neutral on this bill. But I, I did want to, want to throw that out there. Any questions on this one?
Question on the board?
I do have a comment. I think that I'd like to see the public be able to constantly choose their own school board trustees.
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions from the board? All right. Let's move on to eighty-one and we'll go into comments and public comments.
All right, Senate Bill eighty-one. Um, this one was requested by Senator Daley or sponsored by Senator Daley. It's an act relating to regional planning, requiring representatives of certain counties and cities to meet jointly for a specified period to identify issues and make recommendations regarding the orderly management of growth in the region, requiring such representatives to prepare certain reports during that period and providing other matters properly relating there too. So currently, um, every year, every December, we have to submit a report as part of this, the region up here with Washoe County, um, Lion, Story, Carson, and Douglas. Uh, it's a report that I prepared, um, in December and submitted, talking about the growth and, and the planning for that growth in the county. Um, that requires the county managers to do that. Um, that bill was set to expire, um, on, uh, so, uh, uh, excuse me, at the end of last year, so that was supposed to be the last report, uh, um, this bill would extend that through twenty twenty-six. And then it includes what has to be uh, talked about, so identifies issues, um, each positive or negative, uh, relating to the orderly management of growth in the region that is impacting any county, including cities within the county and in the region, including without limitation issues in the following areas. Uh, conservation, including without limitation, the use and protection of natural resources, population, including without limitation, projected population growth in the region and the projected resources of the county or city that are necessary to support that regional population growth, land use and development, transportation and public facilities and services, including without limitation, roads, water, sewer service, flood control, police and fire protection, mass transit, libraries and parks. And it sets forth recommendations that are intended to resolve any negative impact on those issues that are identified in the report. So. So, um, the other thing that this, the other change that this makes though is it would require, um, a legislature from the, from those counties, um, to sit in on that committee. But they would also have a voting power as to approve that report or not. That currently with this county managers, we would sit down and, um, you know, discuss it and then each county kind of puts together their portion of that report. Uh, this would require, um, a legis, um, let's see, even. A one member of the assembly representing a legislative district within the region and designated by the Speaker of the Assembly, um, to sit on that, so the speaker, um, would get to pick that. We wouldn't have to say, and, and who does that? And it could be any legislator from the, um, from the district itself. Um, my take on this is, you know, we've done this, this report for um, since twenty nineteen now, um, I I don't, uh, how do I put this on?
It's a bad bill.
It's a bad bill. I, I, yeah. I, I, you know, I don't know that the legislature needs a vote in approving, um, our, our report that we do. I, you know, if that, that report sunsetted, it wouldn't hurt my feelings. Yeah, so, um, oh, that's right, the city would also have a say in, in that as well, whereas currently it's just put together by the county manager, so. Um, yeah, it, this one is, um, uh, well, I'll leave it up to.
So any questions on this last bill eighty-one? No? Comments, questions? Nope. All right. Yeah, um, well, we can go through if you have anything that you've written down and then I'll go with, uh, public comment at the end and you'll decide what kind of direction we want to go on.
At the end, are we looking for, uh, supporting the bill, watching the bill? Opposing the bill, is that what we're?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, we have, we have those options. We can also be neutral on them. Um, some of these I would probably recommend that we, we watch and see where they go, um. But, but I wanted to get them in front of you, discuss it, uh, so put on your radar. Um, some of them we may decide to oppose today. The, the agenda item is for possible action, so we can, um, so the board can take a stance on these.
And are any of these, uh, moving forward right now, I mean, as far as, where, where are they at now?
Yeah.
Nothing, nothing fast, right?
Just like one that was supposed to be heard on February fourteenth, that was AB sixty-eight, but whether it was heard or not, I don't know. May have been.
SB, I was just informed SB eighty-one will be here next week as well, so that one is on Monday. So, it would, it would be good to take a stance on that one.
So. I'm, uh, up for suggestions from the board here. If, um, we want to oppose anything, um, I, I would like to have public comment before we move on with any action, but kind of a general opinion.
Yeah, I would recommend the same. Let's go into public comment first and then going through this.
Commissioner Hendricks, Commissioner Henderson, so we'll go on to public comment. Okay. I'd like, I see, hands are up, so, uh, let's move on with that. We'll start with, uh, uh, Vita Keller.
Okay, sorry about that. Took a second to unmute. Um, I, I just wanted to comment on, uh, AB sixty-three, um, in supporting our neighboring county of Story because that also supports us in Lion. Uh, when it comes to the I eighty corridor, we actually had a study and a proposal that was submitted four years ago to Governor Sicilac and under that administration, um, it got filed in file thirteen. Um, this is something they've been needing up there on I eighty for quite some time. Um, and like I said, that actually affects part of Lion County as far as Burnley, even though the study only goes to Wadsworth. That section of road, um, is definitely, um, beneficial to Lion County and to Burnley and, and parts beyond. And we all know that, you know, there's daily accidents up there. We're not going to stop accidents, but a lot of those are happening because of short, um, distances, uh, to merge in to traffic, um, the on-ramps. So, um, I would strongly urge that we support, uh, AB sixty-three because it, it definitely is going to benefit more than just Story County. It will benefit us, and like I said, points beyond. Um, and I have to agree with, uh, DA Ry on the AB ninety-two. This has been heard more than once or been presented more than once. Um, and I, I, I like the idea that we leave things in the hands of our elected officials and not appointed officials. Um, if you follow anything that comes out of Clark and Washoe, um, where they have a lot of appointed positions, it's obvious they are controlled by the commission when they're, uh, appointed that way. So, um, and then SB eighty-one, um, I would urge you definitely, no, no. So I will leave it to you guys to discuss from there. Uh, just wanted to point out sixty-three and the previous work that had been done, and I actually had a long conversation with Story County yesterday um, about that previous work because they weren't even aware of it. So they will be digging that out, um, so maybe the study won't take as much as they think it will. So, thank you.
Thank you. And we have, uh, Tony, comments?
Yes, please. Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, want to echo what, um, former Chair Keller said. We, as, you know, we discussed these bills at our last meeting and we certainly support AB sixty-three. That's a good one. Um, as far as AB one oh three, that's just a hard no. It removes the will of the people and that's not a good thing. It, it's essentially an arbitrary restriction. And the other was, I'm sorry, that's SB six sixty-four, where we believe it subverts the will of the people because county commissioners appoint somebody to be the president of the board instead of the people. That's not good. AB one oh three, we view that as just backlash from the COVID pandemic and things that former governors just lacked. Sixty days is pretty arbitrary. And calling a special legislative session that has direct cost to the people. You know, and at some level, we have to trust the governor to use good judgment and this takes that away. Uh, as far as the other issues, we really didn't have consensus. We were more curious about what it's going to cost the public and who covers those costs, uh, especially in terms of separate counsel for the Board of Commissioners. Those are our comments. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Tony. Uh, thank you, Tony. Okay. Uh, more public comment, we have a comment here in the room.
Uh, real briefly, Will Adler, Silver State Government Relations, AB sixty-three has been updated to include the firmly interchange. Right past firmly, the new one they're building out, they asked for inclusion in the bill to Story County's bill, so. Uh, they were added to it, and, uh, SB eighty-one is, is worse than county manager, uh, portrayed it as, but it does allow. Legislative, uh, members, specifically to appointed by the Democratic House and Senate. To be voting members upon a county impact bill with interactions between counties, so one of the first times we allowed. Direct legislative participation with the county to county impact, uh, report or agenda at all, so that, that sort of set precedent, so. Would oppose that too, thank you.
Thank you.
For the record, Tom Hendricks, citizen of Lyon County. Well, I believe the current board could make a good appointment for the school board. In regards to SB sixty-four, I'm against moving the rights of the people to elect their school board. And in particular, this one would appoint the president, the most powerful person on that board. And take that away from the Board of Trustees. Of the school board, so I'm opposed to this, and I urge you to do the same, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawson.
Greg Lawson, Smith Valley, Wellington. Uh, just quickly, I wanted to run through, um. Opposition on some bills here. Uh, agree with District Attorney Rye, but Assembly Bill ninety-two is a loss of local control and. And I don't think that's helpful. Um, Assembly Bill one oh three, I would support, I, I think. Our founding fathers put Article One before Article Two for a reason, and so I think the legislature needs to have a voice and it cannot be. Emergency powers cannot be unilateral and declared by the government. And then on Senate Bill sixty-four, uh, as Mr. Hendricks just noted, um. This is a, another loss of local control and it's really a backdoor attempt by. Uh, others in the state to appoint and not allow election of school board of trustee. Members, so we will see this, uh, has continued to arise. And then lastly, Senate Bill eighty-one. Also, um, I see this as a loss of local control, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Didn't see anything on Zoom, nobody else in the room, so let's, uh, proceed on to. What type of action we'd like to take, um. Do you want to go down the list?
Do we have a slide that just shows the bill number and the title?
No, I will do that next time, though.
Yeah, did you have a comment, Commissioner Jacobson? No? Commissioner Hendricks, any comment on how you'd like to proceed?
Yeah, we could just go through each.
All right. Do any of us want to continue reading these and take action next time, I mean, just, I'm looking at any options that we can put on that.
Go, go through the list and decide yes, no, maybe, or, or later.
Let's, yep, let's go ahead and do that, and of course, they may or not be heard for a while, we'll see, they got plenty of time to hear these things. Um, go ahead with the bills then, and we'll go down the list and. Just kind of a quick through here. Graphic safety for Assembly Bill sixty-three. And so then we break, requested support from the community, uh, outreach that we had, so, um. Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, Chairman Hocken, thank you, I'll move that we support Assembly Bill sixty-three.
Yeah, I'm going to go right along with that, especially since firmly has to be put in on that.
And you, so we have five to support sixty-three.
So we're gonna have to come back and make a motion at the end.
Yeah, we'll make a motion to support and not support, so they're right down, support is sixty-three. Be looking for a motion at the end, uh, Assembly Bill sixty-eight, let's go with Commissioner Hendricks.
I'm yes on that.
Yes, okay.
Yeah, I support this as well.
Sports. And Commissioner Keller.
I'm, I'm, you know, support it.
You're gonna support? Okay, Commissioner Jacobson?
I support the funding, but.
Okay. And I know the way it was presented to me was that it was a more fair way to.
No, I get it, I get it, so, yeah, but yes, I definitely support China Springs.
Okay. And we'll go on with, uh, Assembly Bill ninety-two. Which is. The county council been heard several times, um. District Attorney does not support it, uh, let's go with Commissioner Keller. Support or not support?
I'm opposing it.
Okay, so we oppose. Uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
I do not support.
Okay, Commissioner Hendricks.
I oppose it.
Okay, and Commissioner Henderson.
I'm not in favor of it.
All right, so we've got five opposed. And we'll move on with, uh, Assembly Bill one oh three, which, um. Uh, state of emergency relating to just letting it go on and on, um. Initially Keller.
I'm very much in favor of it.
Favor of termination after sixty?
Supporting it, support.
Support.
Bring it back before the people.
Yeah. No, it's a special, call a special session after sixty days, uh, of a.
If, if I could expand on a little bit, I think that the, the trust was abused a little bit, and so. Me, it, it has to do as long, I don't know if it's going to change anything, it's a little pass thing, it wouldn't change anything. But as long as the people get at least to have a say again, and it doesn't continue on by one person, so that's why I'm supporting it.
Okay, so. One oh three, got a support. Uh, Commissioner Henderson, what do you think on one oh three?
I'm neutral on this bill. Uh, yeah, I'm not sure it's, it's gonna make it through the legislature.
Yeah, I agree, but, uh, Commissioner Hendricks.
Think it needs work, but I do support it.
Okay. And Commissioner Jacobson.
I agree with Commissioner Hendricks, I think it needs work, but. I think this is a reflection of what happened with our past.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. One thing that option we can take too is to support, uh, if amended, um, and we can make suggestions on amendments.
Not sure where to go on that for an amendment in, you know, a short period of time here.
That would require some additional work and research.
Pretty extensive overall, um, Commissioner Kelly, what was yours on that, so. You're, you were. Okay, in favor, and I'm in favor, so basically, right now, we have, uh, four in, in support of one oh three and one neutral. And sixty-four. And I think the. Public input basically was to maintain, um, community, uh, election. And not have any appointments, so, uh, what would be your input on that, Commissioner Jacobson being a previous user?
I think that we sometimes have. County commissioner struggle to be ready for a meeting as it is, now they're going to become the. Have this meeting and be the president of another board. Are you kidding me? This is, this is ridiculous.
So, I take that as a.
No.
Reading between the lines.
This is someone with a total dysfunctioning school board, apparently.
Commissioner Hendricks.
Uh, I'm totally opposed to this one.
Okay, Commissioner Henderson.
I, I'm opposed to this as well, what's going to be next, the school board gets to appoint a county commissioner? Is this, this is stupid.
Uh, Commissioner.
Yeah, everybody's gonna go against this one, I am gonna reach out to Lieutenant Governor. See if, uh, Starbuss can kind of fill me in on what he was trying to accomplish with the, with the bill, cause I don't see what it's trying to accomplish.
Hey, and I, I agree, we need to keep it, uh, public input on that, public vote, uh, and Bill eighty-one. Growth report with, uh, help. Uh, let's go ahead and just go back down the line here, uh, Commissioner Jacobson.
Um, oh, no.
Okay, Commissioner Hendricks.
No.
All right. Commissioner Henderson.
Heck no.
Commissioner Keller.
Further heck no.
We got five heck knows, okay, so definitely. Now. I hope someone's keeping track and has a good motion. Um, he's already had public comment, we've had our info, everybody's had a say, let's go ahead and have a motion.
I'll, I'll take a stab at it.
Okay.
Mister Chair, I'm, I moved that it, that, that. At this time, Lyon County take the positions to support Assembly Bill sixty-three, and Assembly Bill sixty-eight. And Assembly Bill one oh three. And to oppose Assembly Bill ninety-two, Senate Bill sixty-four and Senate Bill eighty-one.
Second.
Yep, got a second, a second from, uh, Commissioner Jacobson, uh, a motion from Commissioner Henderson. And all those in favor of the motion, say aye. Anybody oppose?
Just, just a comment on what he said, and that's at this time, because we're, they're going to be changing and whether you have the right to bring it back. In case something happens, we're not standing on this if all of a sudden something bad happens and go sideways.
Absolutely correct.
Because bills will be amended.
Absolutely, it won't even look the same.
Absolutely, I do want to, I thank you for bringing that up, I do want to point out that this is very early in the session, um, there will be amendments, things. Amendments could either fix a bill that we're opposed now, opposed to now, or, um, make a bill that we're in support of now. Something that we may not want to, so if there's, if there are, um, changes that come up, I will make sure that I bring those. Uh, back to the board, significant changes, if it changes a, you know. A period or something to a comma, well, we'll, we'll just, I'll take a look at the context.
All right, thank you. Let's go on with, uh, item nineteen, clerk treasurer for possible action approved, Lyon County Treasurer to open a new sweep account with Wells Fargo Bank.
Clerk Treasurer, um, I am asking for your authorization to open a new sweep account to take advantage of, um. Interest income that we can gain at this time, um, we're currently looking at, um. Annual per annum in our general, uh, point nine six five percent. If we move it into a sweep account, we'll be able to realize around four point eight percent interest.
Sounds good to me.
I'm the only one up here trying to give you money, not.
And, and how do we get on the sweep account so we can put our money in it? So any comments from the board here, uh, Commissioner Jake?
Thanks, Chairman Hocken, and just real quick, thank you, um, any idea how much money this might?
Yes, I do. So, right now, we're looking at, um. Around a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars a month.
Right about a lot of Kansas City Chiefs gear.
Yeah. Yep. Any other comments, Commissioner Hendricks?
No, I think she took great initiative on this.
Yeah, absolutely, Commissioner Henderson.
I was, I was motion to approve.
Yeah, I motioned that we approve after we take public comment.
Yep, do we have any public comment? I mean, everybody should be jumping up and down, Tony.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair, I'm really just, uh, asking for, uh, plenty of information. What does sweep mean? Cause you're referring to this, uh, specifically.
Basically, it's an account that's set up, um, with Wells Fargo where the. General account is zeroed out and we leave all of our main funds in that account for investment. And only the amount that we need to cover our accounts payable. Um, less what was received is taken out of there and the majority of the money is left in that account for deposit. Or for interest income.
You satisfied then, Tony, with the, uh, answer that you had on that? Okay, I got a thumbs up, super, any other, uh? Like, uh, we've got Vita Keller with a hand up also.
Sorry, I'm being noisy today, I usually just zoom in and watch, um. I, I, again, kind of like Tony, just a little bit of pointed information, I love. What Stacy Lindbergh has brought forward, our new clerk treasurer, um, I, I love the fact that she's thinking out of the box. Um, but I am kind of curious to what our comptroller is saying, um, just, you know, is there any negative side to this? That we're not seeing an unintended consequence, in other words, um, so yeah, so I'm just looking for a little bit of information as well.
Uh, Mister Foley, I'm sure everything's on the up and up here, right?
Josh Foley, Lyon County Comptroller, for the record, yes, it is. Lyon County used to have a sweep account, probably up until around two thousand eight or two thousand nine time period. When the interest rates drop significantly, then the amount of charges you get to have the bank sweep that. Balance back and forth every night exceed what your interest income is, and so. We're at the other end of the curve right now where we can, as she pointed, Stacy pointed out, we've received a significantly. Greater amount of, of interest, and so very low risk investments, it's overnight investments that are done there. So I don't see any downside for the county in this particular case.
Thank you.
Done a great job, of course.
Now. I think that should satisfy that answer.
Did we get a second? Cause I'll second it if we can.
Yeah, um, we had a motion.
I, I believe we have some more public comment in chambers.
All right, yep. Thought you were just stretching, go ahead.
Greg Lawson, Smith Valley, uh, I just wanted to echo everyone else's comments and. By the colors comments that, uh, wanted to thank our new clerk treasurer, Stacy Limber, for taking the initiative. This is a huge win for the county, thank you.
Thank you. And Mister Hendricks.
Tom Hendricks, Lyon County, uh, I as well would like to thank. Stacy for her research and for finding a way to make more money for our county, I do have one question about the liquidity. How liquid is this? We need the money. Very good, thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't see anything else, we have anything else on Zoom, nothing else in the chamber, um. Think everybody's had a comment, any, uh, motion?
I think Camille already made the motion.
Already made the motion, we had a second. Okay, all right. And.
Yeah, she's gonna, she's gonna make it fully spoken.
Oh, okay.
Okay, I move that we approve Lyon County Treasurer's request to open a new sweep account with Wells, Wells Fargo Bank.
All right.
Second.
Second, with Commissioner Keller. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Five zero, good. Yeah, I just didn't recall hearing it, so I'm. Uh, we'll go on to item twenty-eight for possible action authorization of county manager and facility director to take the steps necessary for Lyon County to operate the Stagecoach Community Center. Including but not limited to notifying the present operator that the lease is officially terminated and expired. And that Lyon County intends to take over April one, twenty twenty-three and authorizing the county manager or facility director to sign any correspondence or other documents. Necessary to complete the transition back to Lyon County management of the Stagecoach Community Center. And we have Mister Homestead. You're on.
Okay, um. Uh, we're bringing this forward before you, um, we've had a few problems over there with the facility and, um. We just feel it'd be better use for the public over there if we took it back over, um. And their lease had expired in May, May of two thousand twenty-two. And, um, we want to make sure we're going to maintain. The Stagecoach Bingo and all the other organizations that currently use it now. But I think it'd be easier for other organizations to use it, they'll go through my administrative assistant in Dayton to fill out the paperwork and, um. And, cause currently, right now, we pay all the utilities there, we pay for the maintenance of the building. And we get. And we get no benefit back from that, so I think we can get a better beneficial use of the county for in charge of it.
Thank you.
Questions?
Questions, Commissioner?
Well, one other thing I want to say is that me and uh the County Manager were scheduled to uh. Meet with the. Stagecoach Community Advisory Board. In February, the first meeting in February. But they called us and asked if we could switch to first meeting in March, was kind of. It's cart before the horse, but. Um we're kind of set to try to take over April first. And change out the locks on that and. And and. Do it that way, so. We will be meeting with those April first, I mean, March first, to discuss our plans for the building.
Commissioner Jacobson, anything? No?
No, no.
No, after public comment, Chairman, I'll make a motion.
Alright, public comment. Um we have Amanda Bernand and Tony. So. Amanda.
Good morning, Amanda Bernand, B R I N N A N D. Um I would just like to ensure that um I know he said all the, everybody can still access that I am on the Stagecoach Advisory Board, and would like to ensure that we can still get. Access to that building prior to the meetings, and um I would also suggest that this be continued until after the Stagecoach Advisory Board meeting on March first, we did have to move it. From February to March, because we had a agenda item that we knew would take a long time, so. Uh I think that this should be heard before the community um to get their input as well, thank you.
Okay. Tony?
Thank you, Tony Stevenson, Chair, Lyon County Democrats. Were um. A concerned, curious about how this will affect us. We've been grandfathered in for several years. With, you know, um. The current situation, there's been no charge to us to use the facility, we just ensure that we keep it clean before and after. I'm a little concerned about Mister Foley's comment about uh not getting a benefit. I'm not clear if he was referring to financial or not. Because he was talking about the cost of the utilities, or if this is just a more direct approach, those are our two biggest concerns.
Okay, um. If you would like to answer the question on that public comment, uh go go ahead.
I'll just provide, Andrew Haskin for the record, I'll just provide some additional information for the board. Essentially, this is, this would be like any other facility where um. It would follow our our county uh facility use policy, so under that nonprofits get to use the facility, no cost, um I'm assuming that um. That they would also fall under that, um. And then um for profit stuff or for private events, you know, they pay a pretty minor fee for for the use of the facility, so this will actually increase um. The ability for folks to um to be able to use that facility, not having to go through a third party to to schedule that, to to lease that out. Um it'll just happen straight through the county, um I believe that was the benefit that um. That Director Homestead was talking about, not not necessarily the financial um piece of that, so I just wanna. Just wanna make that clear, as for tabling this until um we do our presentation with the cab, it's really not something that um. The the Citizens Advisory Board, it's not necessarily within their purview, we certainly want their input on how the facility gets used, but facility decisions. Um both they fall under the County Manager, and in this case, because there was a contract involved, um the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. Me. Any other comments, I don't see anything.
Just. Real quick, Chairman Hocken, so just real, just give me the. Recent. Version of this lease.
Um so currently, right now, the space is leased out, um I don't remember, seen by the Stagecoach Bingo Organization. Um and then in under that lease, there's a certain number of. Uh organizations, certain organizations were allowed to use that space um for free. Of all other organizations had to uh pay a fee to that organization that had the lease. Um and it was um the the money was supposed to go towards cleaning the facility. Um and I think that was, it was it, that's kind of. Um that. Into their nonprofit.
I've gotten some information, whether it was right or wrong, was someone living in there?
I'd prefer that we didn't didn't get into.
Right.
Into the specifics of it, um. At this meeting, but we just feel that it is in the best interest of the county to take that back over, we would be issuing keys um to. So for instance, the Stagecoach Community Advisory Board would be issued a key. Um so they would be able to do that, that's something that I don't believe that they have currently. Um so really, this is to provide a better service to the community and provide more access.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mister Chair, I just wanna um express my gratitude to you and Mister Homestead. For reaching out, taking care of the situation, bringing it back under county control. I I applaud your efforts, it's something that's got a little bit out of hand. And, you know, county building should be operated by the county.
Anything else? No comments, questions?
Chairman Hocken, I'll make a motion that we authorize County Manager and Facilities Director to take the steps necessary for Lyon County to operate the Stagecoach Community Center, including but not limited to notifying the present operator that the lease is officially terminated. And expired, and Lyon County intends to take over April first, two thousand twenty-three. Authorizing the County Manager or Facilities Director to sign any correspondence. Or other documents necessary to complete the transaction back to Lyon County management of the Stagecoach Community Center. I also encourage our county staff to attend the March first. Stagecoach Advisory Board meeting to answer any questions and to take input.
That's not part of the agenda.
No.
No, okay, so just take out the last part.
Stagecoach Community Center, period.
Good.
Got it.
Second.
I have a second on that. Alright, I have a. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson and second by Commissioner Henderson, and all those in favor say aye. All as opposed? The five zero on that. We'll go to twenty-one A real quick here for possible action, approve the creation of two building inspector positions in one plan's examiner position, as well as the purchase of three new vehicles. To be funded for the remainder of fiscal year. Through a budget transfer from the general fund contingency for two hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars. Okay.
Andrew Haskin uh put on my Community Development Director hat for this one, um and so um. As head of the Community Development Department, I oversee the Building Department, but it's been contracted out with Far West Engineering. Um at the beginning of the year, as we were putting together budget numbers, they submitted their budget um with their um. Contract amount for the next year, because it adjusts every year, um and it had a significant increase this year, um. And so we took a look at it, crunched the numbers, and um we think that we can um save. Save money overall and have better control over this one if we bring it back in-house, um the contingency transfer is because we would like to start uh. Hiring for that immediately, um. What what'll happen, and what what we anticipate will happen is if we can hire some, hire folks with those positions, then we would decrease our contract amount with. Far West Engineering, or actually, excuse me, Dow, I apologize. Um Dow Engineering, um so. Um it it may offset itself, but but I. Don't know at this time, so that's why we're asking for the contingency transfer, and of course, we'd have to purchase the vehicles for those, that position, um for those positions, so. Because those, obviously, they have to drive around all over the county, so. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No questions? And I I I would just say that I did note that. Overall, we we will save money by doing the transfer, even if it all happens this year, we'll still save money over the budgeted amount for Dow. That's that correct?
I I believe so.
Okay. Comment. You're good?
Okay.
Yep, public comment then. Oh, you wanna, okay, I thought you were asking, because that's that's why I asked.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Uh I I fully support this. Yeah, I. I I think county work should be done by county employees, because at the end of the day, you know who signs your paycheck, and county employees below Lyon County. Other employees may or may not be, so I I applaud your efforts on this.
Okay, thank you. Yes, Commissioner Keller.
So I'd agree with Wes on this, uh the only reason why we went that direction is because of the big downturn, and we had to source it out, it was a hard time for Lyon County at the time. But it's time to bring it back and bring it into house, and and we'll watch our own own affairs.
And I will point out, the contract was pretty different at that time, too, um so originally, this was for a contract position for uh a. Contract Community Development Director and two inspectors, and so um. Somewhere along the lines, that got changed, I was brought on as, actually, I think that. That part of the agreement was terminated well before I became Community Development Director, um but and then they switched over and had a uh. Plans Examiner um in that role, but um but yeah, that that contract has increased year over year, um and. I think this is a good thing.
Okay, public comment. Nothing on Zoom, nothing in chambers, so I'll look for a motion. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve the creation of two building inspector positions and one plan's. Examiner position, as well as the purchase of three new vehicles to be funded for the remainder of the fiscal year through a budget transfer from the general fund contingency. For two hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred ninety-two dollars.
Have a second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Keller and a second by Commissioner Hendricks, um all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have a five zero vote. Let's go to twenty-two A for possible action, prove interlocal agreement between Lyon County and Lyon County School District for the continued joint use of the Smith Valley Library for a term of four years. Uh we have in our records for two thousand three, twenty years ago, when they had the initial. And we have a new one now, so go ahead.
Amy Gettis, Lyon County Libraries Director, for the record, um. To give you a little history about this document itself and the agreement that we have with the Lyon County School District. Twenty years ago, we built this building, um a third of the cost was putted by the. Friends of the library there, a third of the cost was the county, and a third of the cost was the Lyon County School Board. So. They made the original agreement for this for twenty years, uh we were going to do that again. However, the school board, because they turn over every four years, wanted this to be a four-year agreement, but we'll tell you, it took me nine years to get this far with this agreement. It has been approved by the uh Lyon County uh School Board on at their. January twenty-fourth meeting, and it has been vetted by our uh DA, as well as. Being thoroughly vetted by what we call the Joint Use Council, which is members of the Smith Community, Smith Valley Community. Who have gone over this document at. Length for right many years, I would ask you to please support this, because if we don't have this agreement, we don't have a public library in state. So.
Oh. Great, uh any questions, comments? Public comment. Appreciate that, thank you, do I have a motion?
Chairman Hocken, I'll make a motion to approve the interlocal agreement between Lyon County and Lyon County School District for the continued joint use of the Smith Valley Library for a term of four years.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Jacobson motion and second by Commissioner Henderson, do all those in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Five zero vote on that, let's go to twenty-two B. For possible action, accept donation in the amount of five hundred dollars from a private citizen to be used, purchase item and assist individuals experiencing homelessness in Lyon County in the donation. Uh we have a donation letter from, get to that last one there. Recognize the donation. From Bonnie Coker. Private citizen of Lyon County.
We need public.
Any public comment on the donation, I think that uh. The fantastic gesture in this donation.
Chairman Hocken, I've known Bonnie for several years, and I would like to thank her and then make the motion to accept the donation in the amount of five hundred dollars. To purchase and assist uh individuals experiencing homelessness in Lyon County.
Okay. I have a motion and a sec, a second on here.
Second.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Jacobson, second by Commissioner Hendricks. And all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Five zero vote on that. So at that point, we're gonna move on and finish us this agenda. Item twenty-three, agenda requests, let's go down the line, Commissioner Hendricks.
Um not at this point.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Mister Chair, I'd like to um request an agenda item. For our next meeting, for a presentation and discussion. Um impossible. Uh approval of a contract with the Porter Group to represent Lyon County's interest in Washington DC. And I also like to request an agenda item for the second meeting in March. For a proclamation urging the legislature to work with Congress to put Nevada on mountain standard time year round.
Commissioner Keller.
Yeah, to comment on what Wes just asked about, I I. Oh, well, we have uh some. Cost associated with that by then. For the Washington DC.
Absolutely. That was the presentation part.
So on the. I want to have one on there for the State of Nevada's Infrastructure Coordinator. Bob Lucy to come and give a presentation to to us, we don't need it on the next agenda. Item, just as soon as you think. You can fit it in, uh Mister Haskins, because. I know we have a big. Big agenda coming up, so.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Agree, I'm sure we have a. Rather lengthy meeting coming up as well, um but it's two years ago, my first year on the. Board, we did a. Evaluation of our County Manager, last year, I don't remember doing one, um. And I think we need to do that yearly, um so just not necessarily for next meeting. But coming up in the future, just to have uh. And maybe I see Mister. Mo Lasky here, so he could help uh maybe orchestrate that, getting back on track with that. That's that's all I have, and that's not necessarily for the next meeting.
Okay, uh I have one request, and I certainly doesn't even have to be in March, but could be the second meeting, could be first meeting in April. Uh and that would be to discuss the Lyon County lease agreement for Smith Valley Rodeo Grounds. And kind of how that came about from the Dayton. Grounds, and uh so. We can get together and. Look at the lease agreement and let the Commissioners look at that also. Okay. Let's go on with Commissioner comments, uh let's go with Commissioner Keller.
I have no comments.
Commissioner Henderson.
Uh thank you, Mister Chair, I just want to uh. Congratulate Mister Foley on the Kansas City Chief's successful. Uh victory in the Super Bowl, I think it might be the first time in history that a yellow handkerchief is the most valuable player.
Commissioner Hendricks.
I don't have any comments.
Commissioner Jacobson.
Thank you, Chairman, good day, uh I just want, I went and watched the Smith Valley Boys last night on Pyramid Lake. I'd like to wish, uh I know Yarlington's got some. Uh kids playing in the state tournaments coming up, congratulate the wrestlers, their state tournament's over with. And give a shout out to the Fernley Vicarroll Boys and Girls, undefeated, both teams, and they. Start their tournaments here uh Friday in uh at North Valley High School. And just want to wish them luck, and again, all the other teams that are still alive in the playoffs, it's great to have sports being played. Couple years ago, we missed out on that. Couple of years ago, we missed out on that. Thank you, Chairman Hockney.
And I'm said all I'm going to say. Uh, let's go on. Do we have a closed session? Um, no close session outstanding. Last participation for public, no action will be taken on any item until it's properly agendized. It is anticipated that public participation will be held at this time, though it may be returned to at any time during the agenda. Citizens wishing to speak during public participation are asked to state their name for the record and will be limited to three minutes. The board will conduct public comment after discussion of each item. But before the board takes any action, do we have any final public participation or comments? I see Vita Keller has her hand up and so does Tony, our constant commenters today. So Vita. You're up.
Okay, had to get wait. That wasn't unmuted yet. Anyways, um, no, I just wanted to say congratulations to Commissioner Hendricks. Um, I think you're going to do a great job. It's a loss to the planning commission. But, uh, moving on, I think you're going to be a, a real asset to the commission. And so again, congratulations.
Thank you.
And Tony, you're up again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I'm really asking for clarification because of my comment about Walker and Walker. You said that the board didn't have any comment, but if I wanted it on the agenda, I could request it. How do I go about that?
Uh, Mr. Haskin, did, uh, you want to tell them how we can get the, the discussion on the agenda? And we have Mr. Foley coming up to answer part of that question, I guess.
Josh Foley, Lion County Comptroller, for the record. I don't know if this needs to go onto the agenda. Walker and Walker is a name that they used many, many, many years ago. They're currently under Walker and Associates, not Walker and Walker. So I think it's a non-issue. Thank you.
Did, did you hear that, Tony, that they are Walker Associates? That that would?
I did. And when I did a search on Walker, I didn't see it, but I'll check again. Uh, if they don't show up and I've still got further questions, how would I go about raising the issue? For an issue that's not there.
Yeah.
You know, I just want to be sure we're doing business with, you know, in the right way.
I understand when the agenda item, uh, Mr. Haskin, if you wanted to give him a contact point so that he could discuss it with you.
Yeah, well, I'll, uh, please shoot me an email or give, give my office a call.
Okay.
And, uh, we can discuss it.
Did, did you hear that?
I did. I did. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
No problem then. Uh, if there aren't any further comments, then, oh, here we go. We have one in chamber, uh, Mr. Clausen.
Greg Clausen, Smith Valley. So first of all, congratulations, Commissioner Hendricks. And as a member of the planning commission, you are missed. You will not be missed, but you are missed and, and you will also be missed. And lastly, citizens of Lion County, I would encourage everyone to take advantage of the fact that they can testify to the Nevada Legislature about any and all of these bills. And please take advantage of that. We, we are, uh, we, we have the privilege of being able to do that as we can here uh, in this county commission, uh, virtually. So we don't have to travel to Carson City. If you can, that's always great, too. But I encourage everyone from Lion County to make their voices heard uh, in this past and furious legislative session. Thank you.
Any other comments in chamber on Zoom? If not, meetings adjourn, eleven thirty-three.